Welcome, everyone. So we have a quorum. I am Sharon Green Middleton, Vice President of the Baltimore City Council, representing the 6th District. I also serve as Chairwoman of the Economic and Community Development Committee. We are here this afternoon for the following bills. At 2:00, which is now, starts Bill Number 21-0085. And 2:05 PM starts Bill Number 0036R. In attendance, we have members of the committee. Councilman John Bullock of the 9th District.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
How are you, John?
Doing well, thank you.
I also see Councilman Antonio Glover of the 13th District, member of the committee.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
And I also see Councilman Robert Stokes of the 12th District and member of the committee.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
And also see Councilwoman Odette Ramos of the 14th District and member of the committee.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
And just checking to see if there's any additional council members, and I don't see them. And then we have members from the Office of the President. We have in the chambers with us today Lucy Font.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
And we also have Councilman Ryan Dorsey of the 3rd District.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
And getting back to the Office of the President, I see Matt Stegman.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
And I see Nikki Thompson.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
And representing the Mayor's Office, we have Nina Thimulus.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
And just checking to see if Natasha is present with us today. And she's not. Okay, before we begin, I would like to remind you that if you are not speaking, to please keep yourself on mute. Please do not take yourself off of mute unless you are recognized by the Chair. When recognized, please identify yourself in the agency or organization that you represent. Once you have finished speaking, please put yourself back on mute. So let's begin with Bill Number 21-0085. The Baltimore City Fire Code Telephone Access to 911 Emergency System for the purpose of requiring that certain multi-line telephone systems allow for the direct dial of 911, identifying certain terms, authorizing certain inspections, providing for certain fines, and generally relating to access to the city's 911 emergency system. This bill was introduced on May 17, 2021. The bill was sponsored by the Council President on behalf of the administration through, for the Fire Department. And yes, he was mentioned. He was mentioned. Okay. So we'll start with the committee and agency reports, and we'll start with the Fire Department. Do we have Roman Clark here with us? Or a representative? Go ahead.
Sorry, Madam Chair. And we have Scott Brillman on from the Fire Department, but I believe he is in as an attendee if he can be elevated.
We're searching for him now. And we don't see him on the attendees list. He's not on. So we'll wait. Yes?
Sorry, Madam Chair. I do see his name listed. Last name is Brillman, B-R-I-L-L-M-A-N.
There, okay, something came up with a question. She's trying to see if she can get him elevated now.
Oh, Brillman, Scott Brillman?
Yes. So has he been elevated?
Yes.
Okay. Hi, Scott, go ahead.
How you doing?
Good, how are you?
Good. So CARRY'S Law, if I can speak real quickly, will save lives. The law's been around for a long time at the federal and at the state level. It came from a very sad story where a lady named Carrie was in a hotel with her daughter in Texas and was attacked by her estranged husband. Carrie's daughter tried to call 911 multiple times and ultimately could not get through to 911. And it was because the 911 call never went through because Carrie's daughter had to push 9 to get out, to call the 911 center. So CARRY'S Law is that all telephone systems, multi-line telephone systems, must dial 911 and reach the 911 center without dialing any other number. And this will save lives in hotels, in hospitals, in government buildings. So I definitely approve this law, and I hope every jurisdiction in the country adopt it.
Thank you. Are there any comments for the Fire Department Representative, Mr. Brillman? This is for the committee. If not, we'll go ahead and move on. So thank you for the favorable comment. The City's Solicitors Office.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is Hillary Ruley from the Law Department. We approve the bill for form and legal sufficiency, no issues.
Thank you, Hillary. Planning Department.
Good afternoon, Eric Keiser for the Planning Department. We have no objection and defer to fire and housing.
Thank you. Housing and Community Development.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Stephanie Murdock, Legislative Liaison for the Department of Housing and Community Development. We support the administration's efforts to implement this legislation in compliance with state and federal law in order to protect the health, safety, and welfare of anyone using a multi-line telephone system in the city of Baltimore. Therefore, we stand by our bill report in support of the bill. Thank you.
Thank you. Department of Transportation.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair. Liam Davis, Baltimore City Department of Transportation. We stand by our bill report, which is no objection.
Thank you, Liam. Department of Public Works.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair. This is Marsha Collins, representing the Department of Public Works. Our report is on file with the committee. We are here in support. This would give the Fire Department the ability to enforce, inspect, and enforce to make sure that this particular change in multi-line telephone systems takes place. Thank you.
Thank you. And the Department of General Services.
Madam Chair, Nina Thimulus with the Mayor's Office of Government Relations. DGS stands by its report. They do not oppose the passage of the bill.
Thank you. And the Board of Municipal and Zoning Appeals.
Again, Nina Thimulus with the Mayor's Office of Government Relations. BMZA stands by its report in deferring to the Planning Department.
Thank you. And the Department of Finance.
Hi, this is Bob Sennemy, representing the Department of Finance. We stand by our report, no objection to this bill.
Okay. Okay, thank you, Bob. Just a point of information with this bill as well. Baltimore City's MLTS system is compliant with state law. Emergency responders can be reached by dialing 911 or 9911. Do council members have any questions for the agencies at this point?
I have a question. Thank you.
Yes, Councilwoman Ramos.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Chair. This may be for Captain Brillman or maybe even the Law Department. This is a federal law, this is a state law. And so what our bill is doing here is just adding on to the intent to make sure that all of our hotels and office buildings and all of that comply. Or do we have hotels, office buildings, et cetera, that are not in compliance? And so therefore, we need to emphasize, you know, that we need to do this? Or was it something that the state authorized all of the jurisdictions to pass?
The latter comment was correct. So the state authorized us to be able to enforce this law. And locally, we need to pass ordinance to be able to do so. So in other jurisdictions, Baltimore County, PG Montgomery, they are all passing laws. And then some of the smaller counties on the eastern shore are relying on the State Fire Marshal's Office to pass a law so they're able to enforce CARRY'S Law.
And that enforcement would be inspections initially to make sure that everybody's compliant?
Correct. So when the Fire Marshal's Office continues their inspections of businesses and buildings throughout the city, they've added to the list to test the 911 system to see if they're in compliance. And quarterly, the 911 center has to report these findings to the state, whether people are in compliance or not.
And I guess we're here in our committee because this is part of the building codes? Because normally it would be over in PSG for something like this, but I believe it's part of the building codes, which is why we're here, correct? I think that's a Law Department question, but... Yeah. Okay, those are my questions. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Anyone else on the committee with a question for agency? Hearing none, we'll now move to public testimony. Although I think, well, we have like 51 attendees on here and five phone callers. So I'm pretty sure that most of these people are on for the second bill. But let me just go over these rules first. So firstly, computer users must use the raise hand function if you wish to testify. So if you're on a computer, please use that function because we have a number of people listed. When called upon, please state your name before testifying. Attendees who call in by phone will be unmuted, one by one. Callers will hear two beeps when unmuted. If you do not wish to testify, please say so when you are unmuted. If you do wish to testify, please state your name. And again, the raised hands is very important. And I just want to add, you can submit written testimony at any time to the committee through Jennifer.Cotes@baltimorecity.gov.
No hands, there are no hands.
So we don't have any hands raised at this time on this bill? And so these are callers that I'm calling now. So Adam Skolnick? Adam Skolnick? Did you want to testify on this 911 bill? Okay, moving on to the next one?
Yes. Caller number two.
Caller number two? Do you wish to testify, caller number two? No response? Caller number three? Hold on.
Michael Lent.
Michael Lent, are you testifying on this bill?
Yeah.
Was that a no?
It was a no.
Okay, I think we think that's it for the this bill on the Baltimore City Fire Code. So there are no amendments to consider on this bill. So do I have a motion to move the bill?
Move the bill favorable.
Again.
Move the bill favorable by Councilman Dorsey and second by Councilwoman Ramos. Chair Middleton, yes. Councilman Bullock?
Yes.
Is a yes? Councilman Conway, is he here? Okay, he's absent. Councilman Dorsey?
Yes.
Is a yes. Councilman Glover?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Thank you, is a yes. Councilwoman Ramos?
Yes.
Is a yes. And Councilman Stokes?
Yes.
Is a yes. One, two, three, four, five, six. And this bill will be moved favorably at the next council meeting. Now we have Bill Number 21-0036R, and it's an informational hearing, avoiding an eviction crisis for the purpose of calling for a multifaceted and comprehensive hearing on the looming eviction crisis and what we can do to avoid it by inviting the Executive Director of the Mayor's Office of Children and Family Success, the Acting Commissioner of the Baltimore City Department of Housing and Community Development, and the Executive Director of the Community Action Partnership to report out the outcomes of the eviction prevention program and inviting representatives from the Mayor's Office of Immigrant Affairs and the Esperanza Center to discuss the challenges immigrant renters face and provide recommendations on additional protections. And inviting representatives from the Public Justice Center and the Fair Housing Action Center of Maryland to report on evictions thus far, outlining the rights of tenants now and the rights granted by new laws passed in the General Assembly and the City Council, and to make recommendations for additional protections. This bill was introduced on April 5, 2021. And before I turn it over to the Councilmember Ramos, Councilmember and I guess everyone that's kind of on this call, we have a number of written letters from organizations. And there was one particular letter that came from Zachary Berger, doctor and a PhD. And I just want to take a quick minute to read this because I think it's just very important, the very important reason why Councilmember Ramos has took her time to put this informational hearing together and just because of the problems that we are experiencing now and that we will probably be experiencing even more after August 15. So it's a short little letter, but it's just very important. And it says, "I am writing as a primary care physician at Johns Hopkins and the Esperanza Center Health Clinic. My patients include undocumented immigrants who have come to the U.S. fleeing persecution and violence, often at great personal risk. Here, in the midst of a pandemic, they are abandoned by a society who ignores the poor. Real estate inequity is everywhere if you choose to look, and my patients tell me their stories of housing insecurity every day. Out of work, out of money, people wait for the lawyers from the bank and threatening phone calls. I recall a particular one patient, in particular, one patient I have seen for a year now. He is on dialysis and just started working against a few days, started working again a few days a week. Since the start of the pandemic, he has been living in an abandoned house. Luckily, the water and electricity still work, and he can store his medications, including insulin, with some degree of safety. Last week, he came into the clinic for a previously scheduled visit. He told me, 'They let me know I'm going to be evicted tomorrow.' How will he get to dialysis? He walks there now. Where will he store his medications? Where will he sleep? Among the many moral tragedies and unacceptable failures of the pandemic in the United States, including Baltimore and Maryland, have been too many stories like this one." So that's like a really, I thought, was a really good segue into our discussion. And at this point, we'll go ahead and I'll turn this over to the sponsor, Councilwoman Ramos.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And thanks for framing the discussion with Dr. Berger's letter. It does tell about what a lot of people in our whole city are going through, given the crisis. And I can venture to say that, you know, COVID certainly made it much more of a crisis, but we've always had housing insecurity in our city where rents are just way too high, where people can't afford it. So, but this particular hearing is really around, you know, the great program that rental assistance has been, and we want to hear those results, but also understanding what our renters are going through. And if there is more that we can do, this council has taken significant steps already to help renters, was the passage of Councilman Glover's bill with the renewals. And has, I know some of my other colleagues and myself have some other things cooking. So, you know, we take this issue very seriously, and this hearing is to hear more and gather more information about what's happening and what is to come once the moratorium is no longer and as things are starting to open back up again and ports are getting back open. We do have a lot of evictions cases. So this hearing is about what's going to happen next. Glad that some of our professional advocates who've been on the scene are here, as well as our agencies, working hard on this situation. And we will be also hearing from the landlords who've also, you know, suffered greatly during this crisis. So I'm grateful, Madam Chair, for your time and taking the time for our committee to hear this and to my colleagues for taking time to hear everybody today. It's a very important issue for all of us in our city to make sure that everyone is stably housed. And I'm really grateful that we can take the time today to really study the situation. So thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, colleagues.
You're welcome. And I would be remiss if I didn't mention that, you know, security deposit still plays a big role in eviction as well and that we are continually, you know, working with the Mayor's Office and his initiative and the act because all of these pieces work together. So thank you for bringing this also to our attention. We'll go ahead and start with the agency reports. And on that note, we'll start with the City Solicitors Office.
Hi, Madam Chair. This is Hillary Ruley on behalf of the City Solicitors Office. We would approve this resolution for form and legal sufficiency.
Thank you, Hillary. And the Department of Finance.
Good afternoon. This is Bob Sennemy, Budget Director, representing the Department of Finance. We stand by our report. Just wanted to add a little bit of context. The city has received a myriad of funding sources specifically for eviction prevention and rental assistance. We allocated $10 million out of the original CARES Act fund. And there's also been additional awards from the federal government, what they call the Emergency Rental Assistance Programs 1 and 2, as well as some grant funding coming through existing sources like CDBG or CSBG. So we feel like there has been a lot of money put towards this. As I think you'll hear later, the challenge has been, you know, getting the money out the door and getting the program up and running effectively. The total amount so far is $37.8 million between those federal, state, and local sources. I also should mention that the city is also seeking reimbursement for another part of the program, which is providing shelter facilities for homeless individuals. And so that financially is a little bit different. We have to seek FEMA reimbursement for those costs, and the city is in the process right now of seeking reimbursement for some of those sheltering costs. That program, we have gotten guidance from FEMA that as of September 30, the program will go from 100% reimbursable to only 75% reimbursable. And, you know, FEMA can end the formal disaster period at any time. So those are the two, you know, big buckets of money that we have going towards both what we would call eviction prevention and rental assistance. And I'll defer to the others on the call, most specifically MOCFS, in terms of how those programs are run and target population and whatnot. But happy to stay on to answer any questions about the broader financial context. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. And I do want to recognize Councilman Mark Conway of the 4th District was having some technical difficulties at the beginning. So glad you were able to join us, Councilman Conway.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
You're on mute, Madam Chair.
Sorry. Now we're here from the Mayor's Office of Children and Family Success, Tisha Edwards. Is Tisha still on?
Yes, I'm here. I'm here, Councilwoman Middleton, how are you?
Good.
Good. First of all, I want to thank you and Councilwoman Ramos for creating a space for us to have a conversation about the work of the Mayor's Office of Children and Family Success and the Baltimore City Community Action Partnership. My presentation will be reflective of the agency's report and inclusive of BCAT. And so I think that we have submitted written testimony, but I also am prepared to go through a presentation to give an update of the program. Molly, are you ready?
I am, Tisha, but I can't share my screen.
Okay, I think we're ready.
Thank you.
Great. So thank you again, committee members, for allowing us to have this informational session about eviction, the eviction challenge in Baltimore. And I would just like to start by echoing some of the comments that have already been made, that this is not a Baltimore issue, this is a national issue. And it really has been exacerbated since the beginning of COVID. And this has been a challenge that we have been trying to work through for more than a year. And I think that we've made some progress, but unfortunately, the demand and the need continues to grow. And I really want to just take a moment to acknowledge all of the partners who have rolled up their sleeves to be side by side with us in this endeavor. My colleagues in agencies such as the Mayor's Office of Homeless Services and the Department of Housing and Community Development, and also many, many external partners, Public Justice Center, CASA of Maryland, Southeast CDC, United Way, and many, 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 many more. I don't think that we could have gotten to the point where we are today had we not had the collaboration and support of all of those individuals and organizations. Next slide, Molly. As we said, this is not a Baltimore issue. This is a national crisis.
As we said, this is not a Baltimore issue, this is a national crisis. And it's a national crisis that, and a fight that we have been fighting since March 2020. However, recently, as the country is starting to come out of COVID, what we're understanding is that despite our progress around fighting the virus, the housing instability issue is going to be a long lingering effect post-COVID. On June 23, 2021, the Eviction Crisis Act of 2021 was introduced in the Senate. And this was introduced again because this has risen to be a national issue and a national issue that needs a national and federal response, that local government cannot do this alone. Right after the Eviction Crisis Act of 2021, on June 24th, the CDC extended the moratorium that was scheduled to end on June 30th. They extended it to July 31st. There were two things that came out of that communication. First, the federal government was clear that there would not be another federal moratorium and that the moratorium that is scheduled to end on July 31st would be the final date that we would have the CDC protections for clients who were at risk of being evictions, of being evicted. And secondly, what came out of that is Department of Justice guidance that same day. And the Department of Justice issued guidance to say to state governments that it was time for them to step in and to really work to find eviction diversion strategies, to launch those strategies. Money alone is not going to solve this problem. It's going to take a coordinated effort and a coordinated response. And the courts have a role to play in helping us to address this growing concern across the country. And so although we did get a slight extension through the end of July, there was this mandate that we need to start working on alternatives to eviction through our state and local government. Next slide. So as has been communicated, again, this is a national issue, but in Baltimore specifically, we have really, really taken a real beating when it comes to the eviction crisis. Our community has really suffered. Our families, many families, too many of our families are at risk and the numbers are just staggering. Housing instability was an issue prior to COVID. On March 20, 2020, it just became almost overwhelming for many of our families and for our community as a whole. In March 2020, we had about 1 in 10 renters who were late in their rent. By April, that increased to 1 in 5. By June, 1 in 3 renters are late and have some kind of arrears associated with their rent. So this is extraordinary progression in the wrong direction since the onset of COVID. And again, this is also shown in data that we've received from DHCD, that back in October, those numbers represented about 11,000 families. March 2021, the data showed us that there were about 28,000 families who had some kind of arrears and were in need of support. What's even more unfortunate is that even though we've had a moratorium for, for more than a year, evictions have continued. This is a very complicated relationship, the tenant landlord relationship. Back rent is only one of other, many other reasons that a landlord could be pursuing eviction, not willing to renew leases. And so even with the moratorium, which was a huge resource and definitely helped the situation, it did not solve the problem that many of our families were facing. Next slide. So as soon as, again, we moved into our overall emergency response in June 2020, the Department of Housing and Community Development quickly developed the Temporary Rent Support Program. This was a short-term initiative and it only covered three months of rent. And there was, it was high demand and DHCD kind of led the way in helping us to set up a framework for eviction prevention in our city. After DHCD closed out the Temporary Rent Support Program in November 2020, the Mayor's Office of Children and Family Success and the Baltimore City Community Action Partnership partnered with Homeless Services. And we then created a much more robust, much more far-reaching, more benefits were included in this extent, this new eviction prevention program. It was an expanded effort that leveraged the support of the Housing and Community Development, the Mayor's Office of Homelessness, and the Mayor's Office of Children and Family Success. Currently, the entire eviction prevention program is ran and administered by the Baltimore City Community Action Partnership. Next slide. So you heard from the Finance Department talking about just the, the resources that have come to bear to implement this program. We currently have accessible to us about $37 million in local, state and federal funding. We also have in addition to the 37 million, we have 16 million that we are in a partnership with United Way. This was a part of a state allocation. And we have asked United Way to process all of what we call the landlord bundles. These are rent arrears requests from landlords for tenants who are living in multifamily housing units. And so they are really focused on those larger landlords and we are focused on individual tenants and tenants who are with individual landlords. So we're kind of dealing with that smaller micro community and United Way is our lead partner in supporting the larger multifamily housing units. We anticipate more resources are on the way. We expect that there will be an additional federal allocation and an additional state allocation to this initiative by the end of the year. So there will be a $24 million-ish allocation from the state and we're expecting about an additional $23 million from the federal government by the end of this calendar year. Next slide. So as I said, we, we are really trying to pivot and we are moving with the crisis. We've tried not to be static. We want to be responsive. As the, the dynamics around the housing instability crisis and evictions have shifted, our strategy has moved with the situation. So from winter of 2020 to this spring, we were really, really focused on back rent recovery and our primary focus was getting money out the door. Tenants were eligible up to 12 months of back rent assistance. And so we have been working very hard to process those applications, stabilize those tenants, get the money out the door with a real focus of, as I say, back rent. As we now shift, where the moratorium is lifting, the landlords are in a, in a position where they can move forward with evictions, where many tenants have exceeded their 12-month benefits allocation, meaning they may have gotten, started getting back rent assistance in March 2020. If they were consistently needing support because they were out of work and because of their financial situation, March 2021, they hit a 12-month allocation limit. So we are now having to have a, a different response for those individuals. And I can't, you know, I can't stress enough, for many families, this has been a, a, a year and a half, almost two-year situation that they have been working through with us. And so there are limits on what we can provide to families. And so once they hit that moment, we need to have a plan in place with the landlord, with the tenant, so that we can continue to support housing stability. So that's where we're going now. We're really, really focused not just on paying back rent, but what is the plan forward for these families? Because this is not an infinite amount of resources. There are guidelines, there are timelines, and so we have to start thinking about what happens next. And we have to be willing to have those conversations with our, our clients and our partners to really think about what is it that families need? And this is a very individualized situation in many cases. So now we are really bringing forward resources to assist with relocation. In some cases, the landlord and tenant are not going to be able to resolve the issue. It is bigger than back rent. They do not want to renew the leases. The families don't want to be in these locations anymore for a variety of reasons. So we have to have a much more comprehensive response other than just paying back rent. So now we are bringing the resources forward to address relocation, legal services, utility assistance, security deposit and case management assistance. That is why we were really, really excited to have the partnership with United Way so that they could focus on those massive locations and, and help take some of that burden off of the agency. They have a very streamlined payment process. They can get hundreds of cases through for one landlord in, in a bundle. And we needed to really focus on some of the, the highest need tenants who needed much more than just a back rent payment. Next. As I said in my opening comments, it's really important for the council and the public to know that we have not done this alone. From day one, we've surrounded ourselves with partners who have really worked side by side with us. They, they pushed us, they've given us a lot of critical feedback, they've helped us to expand our reach, and they've challenged us to make sure that we really have a program that is comprehensive, that is robust, and that meets the needs of, of Baltimore specifically. So I do want to acknowledge the United Way of Central Maryland, Southeast CDC and Casa de Maryland, the Public Justice Center, and again, my, what I call my sister agencies because they are all ran by women, the Department of Housing and Community Development and the Mayor's Office of Homeless Services, who have really helped us to cobble resources together and think about this work in a very strategic way. Next slide. So I think one of the things Councilwoman Ramos asked us is how is it going and what are we doing? Well, to answer that question, Councilwoman, as of July 2021, of the 37 million, we've spent 18, I'm sorry, July 2nd, we've spent 18 million of 37 million dollars. So we've gotten about 48% of the money out of the door. We expect that all 37 million will be spent down as we start to get towards the top of the first quarter of fiscal year 2022, which is why it's important that we get that second influx of money from the state and the federal government by the end of the year because we are on track to spend down everything that we have by the first quarter of the calendar year. We have supported about 4,000 households in this process. Every single council district has been represented in this process. The reason that's important is because we're also always asked, are we, do people know about the resource? Are people taking advantage of it? And the answer to that is an overwhelming yes. Do we need to continue to do outreach? Absolutely. Are there cases that come up where really the tenant has not applied for support, did not show up for court, and then we have to, to, we have to have another strategy in place to address that? But we are on the move and we have awarded 4,000 applications, as I said, and that's representative of every council district. We have about 400 applications from the immigrant community and already pushed out half a million dollars and there's more to come in that regard. And again, I just want to say that I don't think we could have ever reached the immigrant community had we not had the support and backing of Casa de Maryland and the Southeast CDC and others who are trusted partners in the community, who have made our immigrant brothers and sisters feel comfortable participating in the program. And I'm really, really proud of the fact that we have those partnerships. We, we can demonstrate that we are reaching those communities. There's still a lot of work to do, but we see the immigrant community, we understand that their needs are very specialized and we have to have a very targeted approach in order for them to fully engage and take, and take advantage of this resource. Next slide. So what do we consider to be some of the strengths of our program? And there, there are things that we are doing well, but there are absolutely things that we need to continue to work on in order for this program to be what it needs to be to meet the needs of Baltimore. But we have set up a very strong customer service infrastructure. It's, it's something, it's my passion project in many ways because the challenge of this has been that we have been administering this program through our cap centers while being closed to the public. So that was a very complicated situation to a community that doesn't always have access to the digital resources to be able to do these kinds of things online. We know that our clients are super frustrated. We know that our clients are, are experiencing high levels of trauma and anxiety because of this situation. And so establishing a call center was very important to us. We have a constituent services team that only takes emails and answers questions specifically related to eviction prevention. On any given day, we can have up to 300 emails a day where people are calling us about the status of their application and wanting to know if they qualify, all kinds of questions. We also have a texting system that we're using so that we, when we get information and you want to know the status or we're missing documentation from you, or we want to give you an update on your application. And we found texting to be a really, really strong resource for connecting with clients, especially in this environment where we're not open to the public. And going back to my immigrant brothers and sisters, we are committed to, to communicating in the native language of our applicants. That's very challenging for us. We've never done it before. We're getting better and better about it, but it is a core principle of our, of our organization and of this program specifically. We do not want language to be a barrier to access. So we're pushing ourselves very hard to communicate in native languages with our clients. We're also made adjustments to the application process for the Latinx community so, so that they can provide alternative IDs and documents. There's a lot of self-reporting of income that is allowed through this program. And as I said, we're doing a lot of bilingual communications. We even have a Spanish video tutorial that we sent out via Facebook so that we could make sure that folks knew how to apply for the application. Another strength of the program is that we have a very clear escalation protocol. So when individuals are, are facing eviction and it is imminent and they have a verification of that through notice of the landlord and notice of the court, we do have an escalation process where those clients are directed to a, a very specific team. And that team works very hard to make sure that we are in contact with the landlord. We let them know that we are willing to pay and work with the landlord to move that client off of the eviction rolls. And then finally, as I said, this is not a Baltimore issue, this is a, a national issue. So we have tapped into regional and national best practices so that the program that we are administering, we don't have to figure it all out on ourselves. There are other big cities, New York, Chicago, Detroit, that are that are experiencing the same level of challenge that we are. And we are tapping into those networks to help us to make sure that we are utilizing those best practices and learning from our colleagues. Next, Molly. So, as I said, even though there are some strengths, there are some real challenges associated with implementing a program at this speed with this degree of complexity. One of the biggest challenges that we started the conversation off with is pre-COVID, there was a disproportionate need for back rent support. What we find is many folks are coming to us for assistance, but the incident period is March of 2020. So, if you had back rent due to your landlord prior to March 2020, this is not an allowable resource because the federal and state dollars are connected to COVID. And so, we really have to work with tenants and work with landlords when many of our clients are coming with arrears pre-COVID. There's been a surge in demand since March 2020. So, the numbers are growing every single day. And no matter how many applications we process, there is 10, 20, 30, 40 more in the queue. So, it's a never-ending churn because of the deep demand for support. Many of our applicants need high-touch support. It is very hard for them to do this through a virtual environment. Again, the call center was implemented to help with that. The constituency services were helped, were, started to help with that. But it is still very challenging. And we hear a lot of folks who are very frustrated that they can't come into the center, sit down with someone, and go through this process with them. And we're hoping to change that. We are planning our reopening. And so, I'm looking forward to being able to bring tenants and clients into the CAP centers, especially those who are really technology challenged. One of the other things that's been very hard about this is that there are multiple funding sources and different requirements depending upon the funding source. And so, the federal money is the most flexible money. The state money is very complicated, very, very low. You have to be at a lower level income. The documentation you have to submit depends on the funding source. And so, it's a very complicated program to administer because different rules apply to different communities based on the funding stream that we're using. And that can be really confusing to tenants and landlords and even to the staff that are administering the program. There's a lot of document collection. We have to have documents from the tenants and from the landlords in order to produce a check. So, sometimes the tenant has everything in, but the landlord does not. Or the landlord has everything and the tenant does not. And so, document collection can really slow down the process of getting checks out the door. And as we said before, our initial focus was on a low barrier eligibility. But the funding rules are changing. And so, that will be hard for people to understand. Why was I eligible last week? And now, I'm coming back to the same program and you're saying I'm not eligible? Well, that depends on the funding source that's available to us at the time and based on that client's individual circumstances. And as we said, that what's really been unfortunate is that despite all of this work, despite all of the money that we've spent, almost $20 million, there has been evictions. And so, even though we had a moratorium in place, it did not cover every single scenario. And so, it's just been very frustrating that as we've been trying to build this program up, that there has been cases where we just have not been able to meet the needs of families because of their specific situations. This all fuels, as I said, a really complicated program with varying application process times and growing demands for support. Next, Molly. So, where do we go from here? And I think we are really focused on three main kind of strategies as we are continuing to pay back rent, continuing to try to work with families and stay the evictions. But there are three things that we're moving towards this summer. The first is we want to build out a much more robust housing stability focus within the eviction prevention program. That includes relocation assistance. That includes security deposit and rent forward funding. And definitely sheltered, our shelter diversion partnership with the Mayor's Office of Homeless Services. We do not want families going into shelter. The worst place for a child to be is in a shelter. And so, we need to do everything that we possibly can to stabilize families and keep them where they are and to help them develop a plan a plan further than today's crisis around housing stability. The second thing that we are doing is that we are launching a partnership with the District Court and the Sheriff's Office as required by the Department of Justice guidance that I referenced earlier on an eviction diversion strategy. Effective in August, we will have staff at the courts to stand side by side with tenants, with their legal counsel, and to hopefully be able to provide more direct feedback to assure the court that individuals are approved for funding and to hopefully put tenants in a position to better defend for back arrears. And so, we're excited that beginning in August, we'll have the staff and we'll have the capacity and processes in place to do that. We are also working with the Sheriff's Office to provide us the detailed information about anyone who is, who already has a judgment against them and where the Sheriff's Office has been ordered to evict. There are cases where the sheriff has been ordered to evict, where we have been able to step in and work with the landlord. And the landlord drops those cases and allows the, allows the tenant to stay. We also need that sheriff's information because we are going to hold landlords accountable to their agreements. Going forward, landlords are not able to apply for eviction 60 days after they have received funding from the eviction prevention program. That was not a requirement in the first stage of the program, but it is a requirement going forward. And we will be using that data from the Sheriff's Office to make sure that our landlords honor their end of the commitment. If we pay and if you agree to take those resources, then you're going to work with us to help stabilize those families. So, we'll have more visibility into who has a judgment, who those landlords are, so that we can ensure that there is complete support and agreement and that we all do what we said that we were going to do in these cases. And finally, we've received a lot of feedback from our clients saying that they need more information about the status of their application. So, we have updated the platform that we're using for the eviction prevention program so that landlords, tenants, and attorneys can have more visibility into the status of the application. They can be more proactive and more strategic around how to plan for next steps. So, we want much more, we want much more visibility into the status of the applications and much more proactive communications with tenants and landlords so that they're not anxious, so that people aren't running to the courts, and so that everyone can be assured that their application is in the queue and will be processed. Final slide, Molly. So, the final thing that I would just like to say in closing is that I really want to acknowledge the staff at the Baltimore City Community Action Partnership. They have been working on this tirelessly for more than a year. They've been working mandatory overtime. They have processed thousands of applications. And they have really leaned in to support our neighbors during this very, very difficult time. And so, although I'm the one presenting on behalf of the agency, the hard work is really being done in the CAP centers. And I just want to thank those employees for everything that they have done to get us to this point. And just appreciative that they've stuck in it. We've gotten throughout this presentation, I've shared testimonials from many of our tenants who have expressed to us what this has, this program has meant to them. And we wanted to share that with the council and we wanted to share it with the public because it really speaks to why we are so committed to this work. So, thank you, Councilwoman Middleton and Councilwoman Ramos for giving us an opportunity to share progress on the city's eviction prevention program.
Well, thank you, Ms. Edwards. And again, thank you for your leadership for, of this agency and in particularly the Community Action Partnership, the CAP centers. I think I should reveal that as I serve as Vice Chair on the Board of the CAP Center along with Robert Stokes as a member. And just listening to all of this, I want to add that within that year and a half or so that I have been serving on that board, I have just, I want to thank the Community Action Center because the staff and workers there just really do so much. They really do a lot of work and they do focus on this eviction process. They have had, and I've been a part of the training and it's been a learning experience for me. The training that this, that the staff and the board, and I'm talking about hours and hours and days of consistent training. I even got those phone calls reminding me, you got to get on this Zoom for this training. And the training, I can vouch, has been three and four and six. I think we had one that was a whole, complete day of virtual. So, it's been, and the rebranding and renaming of the whole organization, the dedication that is there. I'm just, I'm very confident that your team can help to carry us through and help. You had mentioned 4,000 and I just know that it's going to be more than 4,000. So, I have the confidence because I've experienced it and have seen it firsthand. And I have learned so much about the need of the people, the needs of the people in this city, particularly our most vulnerable people. And I know that those numbers are going to continue to grow once we get through August 15th. So, it's because of me being a part of that board that has elevated my passion and hope my partnership with Councilwoman Ramos on this particular subject. It's, it's really something that, you know, has, it's important. And it's important for all of us to continue to be partners. So, I'm going to stop there. If there's any comments or questions before we move on to the next person, the next agency. Any comments at this point from the committee? Yes, Councilwoman?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair and thank you Director Edwards. That was a great presentation. I was able to write it all down in my notes as well. And the fact that you're thinking ahead to the next step is very important as well. Knowing however, that the need is 28,000 and we've only helped four is more of a money issue and not necessarily trying to, we're trying to get to everybody, I know you are. So, you know, please send us as much information that we can get out about how to help people. I know, I put it in my newsletters and social media, but I think all of us, you know, would appreciate that as well. But what, you know, I am distressed about this 28,000 in need. And then, you know, we're only able to help 4,000. And so, I do think that we're going to have more of a crisis. What, how are we, how are we going to go? Because the next step seemed to be about those 4,000. So, what is it that's going to help us get to help more, more people that are going to be in need? Otherwise, I think unfortunately, we're going to have not only court issues, but also, you know, more people facing homelessness. And so, I'm hoping that we, you know, I know you're, the program that you've outlined is great. And I know some of those quotes were actually from my constituents. So, I know it's been very helpful. But I, you know, there's more, there's so much more.
Yeah, yeah, you sound, you sound like my brain every day. So, it is complex. So, what I would say is that I think as a city, we're going to have to approach this from multiple perspectives, right? And back rent is important. If you don't have the money to pay your rent, landlords can't pay their mortgages. That has, resources have to be at the foundational part of this strategy. I also, you know, we are starting to talk to families a lot about what are their workforce plans? Because it is not an infinite amount of resources. So, we've had a lot of people who've been out of work because the economy has been shut down. Schools were closed. I think that as schools open, as the economy begins to open, people want to pay their rent. People, those, it's hard to ask for help. So, I think equipped, creating an infrastructure that helps those who are in crisis. I don't have the money and if I don't pay, I'm going to lose my housing. But we also have people asking us, where can I find a job now? What can I do? I was working at that restaurant. It is closed and it's never going to open again. Where do I go from here? So, Councilwoman Ramos, I just think that there's not one silver bullet out of this. Moratoriums helped, but it didn't solve the problem. Money to pay back rent helps. We got to have enough money to work with people. But I, I am really trying to figure out with families, what's your path forward? Where, how do we stabilize you? What is it that you need? And you would be surprised how many families, things fell apart when they stopped sending their kids to school. Things fell apart when the daycare closed. So, getting all of those pieces back in place is what's going to stem the tide. And we need to do everything that you're talking about legislatively to protect tenants. And we need to get the landlords their money because some of the landlords, they can't feed their families if we're not getting them the check. This is an ecosystem. And so, the ecosystem is fragile. And the ecosystem has, has been harmed. And so, we've got to rebuild. And so, I just think the council and the city and our partners, we need to be attacking this from every aspect. The more kids that are in school in the fall, the more parents that can go back to work, right? The more businesses that are open, the more people can look for new employment. And so, this is just one important pillar of a really larger problem. And I just think we need to keep our eyes on all parts of the ball in order to really come out of this stronger and better and families whole. Just paying back rent does not solve the problem. It's an important part, but it's not the solution. So, I just want to encourage us to continue to have that more comprehensive, holistic conversation.
Thank you, thank you very much. I think all of us are thinking in that same way. And it's almost like, well, where do you start? So, we're starting on the back rent at this point, but I'm glad that we're all thinking on the next step. Thank you very much, Director Edwards, and thank you, Madam Chair.
So, we'll continue through the agencies unless there's a burning question from another committee member. Hearing done.
I have one, Madam Chair.
Oh, yes, Councilman Glover.
Yeah, I apologize. Thank you, Madam Chair. Director Edwards, I just have a question for you. Is it possible that the council can receive like some type of information stating, you know, exactly how many applicants from each one of our respective districts have had applied? And the reason why is because I just want to kind of break down the demographics to find out exactly who in my particular district are really having these issues. Because they'll, they'll reach out to us from time to time. And we're all trying to figure out how we, you know, able to battle this thing together and how we can get funds out. But if I can just get a breakdown, I think my colleagues would probably would like to have a breakdown as well. So, we can see exactly what neighborhoods and what districts are actually giving to applicants that are coming to you and you guys are helping as we move forward.
Sure, that's no problem, Councilman Glover. Councilman Stokes is always asking me that question. He says, is my, is my district getting what they need? I need to know who needs to know because I want to make sure every family knows that this resource is available to them. So, that's a great question. And we can follow up with some very specific council demographics. I want to see if we can do some mapping for you. Because if you look at a I want to see if we can do some mapping for you because if you look at a map, you can kind of see even more specific what communities. So let me, let me work on that with my team, Councilman Glover, and I'll come back to you. But yes, we can provide you some council-specific data.
And you can send that through Jennifer Coats through the committee, and then we'll get it out to the total council.
No worries.
There's just one more. And I know I heard you mention earlier, Director, that, you know, we don't want to have people living in shelters. And, you know, I know soon the moratorium is ending like July 31st. And I have a bill that's been put in place and passed within the council that we're waiting to get signed by the mayor. And I just fear that, you know, by this moratorium is being, you know, lifted, you know, starting July 31st, that a lot of our constituents across the city are not going to be benefiting, you know, off of this program.
Yeah, I can't speak to any bill that's with the mayor. That's kind of over my area.
I understand, I understand. I'm just, I clearly understand, you know, where you're coming from. I'm just saying that, you know, just putting it out there that, you know, at the end of the day, that, you know, this, this moratorium is ending July 31st. And we're in a crisis. And at the end of the day, like, you know, black and brown, you know, people, all can be put out their homes. I know that Councilwoman Ramos stated that there are already 300 evictions that are waiting right now as we speak, and the number is just only going to get higher. So I just wanted to throw it out there. But I greatly appreciate this informational hearing because I've learned a lot myself. So thank you much. Thank you, Madam President. Vice President, sir.
That's okay. Thank you. Now we'll hear from the Mayor's Office of Immigration Affairs, Catalina Rodriguez Lima.
Councilwoman Ramos for this.
Catalina?
Can you hear me?
Yes, hi.
How are you? Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Councilwoman Ramos, for the opportunity to present today. Just very briefly, I just want to talk about our role during rental assistance across, across agencies and during the last year. We have a couple of roles. One of it is a technical assistance role, helping agency translate documents, creating accessibility, serving as a source of information for community organizations, and serving in outreach efforts. In terms of technical assistance, we have been working with housing and MOCFS from the beginning of the pandemic to ensure that the program design, rental assistance was inclusive of immigrants or removing unnecessary questions like immigrant status or requiring a Social Security card or Maryland ID. We also translated materials and made sure that the applications were available in multiple languages. We've also responded to the fears of government and advocated to partner with CASA, Latino Economic Development Center, and Southeast CDC to help with intake. You know, as the program rolled out, we were a part of the implementation and we continue to be a part of the process during the limited English proficiency task force that MOCFS has created to address any ongoing issues with the program. In terms of multilingual messaging, again, we've translated materials and simplified the language to ensure that immigrants who are, who can't speak English can access the program, but also ensuring the CAP staff were properly trained on how to support people who can't speak English and providing access to our telephonic interpretation account. We run a series of communication channels where we've shared multiple communications in the city's five core languages about rental assistance through Facebook posts, Facebook Live Events on a weekly basis. We've also have a bi-weekly, bi-weekly community stakeholder call where we've shared, again, seven presentations on rental assistance. We take our role as a communicator and as a source of information for immigrants very serious because they're not watching WJC 13 or Channel 2 or read the Baltimore Sun. And because of that, we've not only created our own channels, but also work very closely with ethnic media and these very grassroots groups that may exist on a WhatsApp group or a Facebook page. In addition to that, during the pandemic, we've also increased our outreach, again, to make sure that residents understand the resources as it relates to health and economic resources that the city is providing and that have been created because of COVID. We actually have a partnership with CASA where we have six community organizers who on a weekly basis are canvassing neighborhoods to inform residents about health and economic resources, including rental assistance. We found this to be the most effective way to get to immigrants who may not have email or may not, may not have access to traditional ways of communication. We also partner with Esperanza Center, and we have a case management and cash assistance program where residents not only receive cash assistance, but also case management for up to 12 weeks where they can access other public benefits, including rental assistance. We've also established a referral system for immigrants to ensure that they're guided to the right organization. To date, we've actually referred close to 400 people to either CASA, LEDC, Southeast CDC, or MOCFS for assistance with rent. And then through our process in the LEP immigrant work group at MOCFS, we've been able to understand the struggles of residents facing eviction or being threatened by their landlords. And because of that, we've created a series of informational materials in partnership with MOCFS, the Office of Civil Rights, CASA, Latino Economic Development Center, Southeast CDC, and the Public Justice Center. And we have a series of sessions, upcoming sessions to share information about what are the rights of residents, including immigrants, and where to seek help. We have a session in Spanish scheduled for July 27, a session in English on August 12, and a session in French on August 19. Some of the challenges that we've hear from, we've heard from communities, as you can imagine, given the prior administration, many immigrants are fearful applying for government programs because of public charge, which thankfully is no longer an issue during the Biden administration. But there's still a lot of fear from residents afraid of applying to public benefits because that could be deemed as a public charge in the future and could prevent them from becoming legal permanent residents. We've created materials and informational materials for all of the partners to share that this is no longer an issue, but nevertheless, people are still afraid. The other issue that we've heard is landlords are threatening residents with ICE, which is extremely unfortunate. ICE is not necessarily going to respond to a call of an individual household. We've also shared this with our residents. But we've also partnered with the Office of Civil Rights to make sure that they can report these instances. And we also make them aware that if arrested by ICE, the city of Baltimore will provide you an attorney to represent you in court should this fit the case. The other issue that we've encountered is a lot of our folks don't have contracts. They have very informal processes with their landlords, which I believe can contribute to the delay of payment in terms of providing access and rental assistance. There's also, as Director Edwards mentioned, language barriers. The city's core languages are Spanish, French, Korean, Mandarin, and Arabic. A lot of our folks, approximately 30% of immigrants are limited English proficiency, which means they cannot read, write, or speak English. So I'm really, really grateful to MOCFS and Director Edwards for being very intentional about building an inclusive program that meets communities where they are. We're grateful for her agency for not only allowing us to provide recommendations, but also to work with them on an ongoing basis to troubleshoot issues, unique issues faced by immigrant communities. You know, Councilwoman Middleton, you mentioned undocumented residents are very difficult to serve based on the letter that you you mentioned. Unfortunately, they, they're prevented from accessing any additional benefits like the stimulus check or unemployment insurance. So they have limited resources available to them to weather the pandemic. Many of our residents also have low literacy levels, so making sure that the language is simple and in making sure that they're working with trusted partners like Southeast CDC and CASA and LEDC is very, very critical. And then the other issue that we've experienced, and I'm sure the CAP Center and MOCFS have experienced, is immigrants not knowing their place of residence, particularly those living right on the borderline with Baltimore County. Many people come to us not knowing that because they're in the county, they don't necessarily qualify for the benefits that the city of Baltimore can offer. And more importantly, the county has not, does not have an infrastructure as robust when it comes to rental assistance that is being intentional about providing resources to immigrants, not just from the point of making resources available, but making sure that we have the infrastructure necessary to make that happen. Some of the recommendations and opportunities, you know, continue to fund the infrastructure. Again, this is critical. As government, we may not be in the best position to serve immigrants because of the fear, because of the lack of trust. Making sure that we have future funding to connect and to work with community-based organizations that can help with intake, that can help with outreach, and really to bridge the gap of any fear that immigrants may have from accessing resources is critical. Continue to carve out funding to support undocumented households. We have close to 16,000 individuals that are undocumented, and approximately 3,000 of those individuals have a US citizen child. Finding, continuing to find flexible funding so that these households are not left behind will be really critical. The other thing I would mention is continue to support in-person outreach to meet communities where they are. They're not on, on computers. We really need to be convincing neighborhoods to let them know about what's available, how could they access those resources? How do, how do we make sure that we're meeting them where they are, whether it is at a church or in their homes or at a civic ethnic group? The other piece that has been very telling through this process is the need of, the need of investing around tenants' rights. A lot of our families don't necessarily understand the process. Many have very informal contracts with their landlords because they're undocumented in some cases. Because of that, they don't, if they don't have a social security number or they don't have an ITEN number, it's, it's not, it's not a formal process. And then I want to address, Councilwoman Ramos, you mentioned your concerns about like, what else can we do to to support families given the high number? And as Director Edwards mentioned, rental assistance may not be enough. You know, we really need to be able to increase case management, particularly to help undocumented families access additional public benefits available to parents of US citizen children. Things like SNAP, emergency broadband benefit, and the latest benefit that came out of the Biden administration, which is the child tax credit, which is available to undocumented parents with US citizen children. My opinion is that by providing wraparound services and additional benefits to undocumented families that may not have access to unemployment insurance or the stimulus check could be a way to help these families weather the pandemic. Thank you so much for the time, and if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Councilwoman, I have a question, maybe it's state.
Okay, one second. I just first want to thank you, Catalina, for your detailed update and testimony. And I know you've been, you know Baltimore very well and have been in your position for a good time and doing some great work. So thank you for all that added and great information. And Councilman Stokes, you're next.
I think it's more suggestive for Ms. Edwards. I think I mentioned this before, how we use the Chum, Chum 25 TV station to get that out. Anthony McCarthy, who has the WAA now, and they have their public service announcement there, and have Catalina to come on WAA or do a segment on Channel 25 to talk about the barriers. Because we not, I think we can use the media a lot more for, not just for this whole program, but talking about what Catalina was talking about. She need, we need to get her on EAA and Channel 25 and really put it out there so everybody understands. And what happens is you'll get more input. You might get some more additional funding, but also talking about interns in college, maybe that's something for they, they can actually learn about the immigration issues or the immigration laws and then help out Ms. Edwards with you on that, just getting the word out. I think we, we have enough media in this, in this city that we need to tap into to really get, get this out in front of everybody. So this is just a suggestion.
Thank you, Councilman Stokes. Any other questions for Catalina from the committee? Thank you, Catalina. Moving on to another very important agency, and that's with Commissioner Alice Kennedy that's leading housing and community development. You're next.
Hi, good afternoon, Madam Chair and members of the committee. Alice Kennedy, Acting Commissioner for the Department of Housing and Community Development. DHCD stands by our bill report in support of the resolution. And as an agency, we are committed to supporting residents facing eviction. As stated previously, during the COVID-19 pandemic, DHCD implemented a temporary rent support program, otherwise known as TRS, to assist tenants experiencing COVID, a COVID-19 hardship. DHCD through TRS was able to support 686 tenants, and the average assistance dispersed to tenants was $2,486, which would cover the months of April, May, and June of 2020. From July 2020 onward, tenants have been referred to apply to the Mayor's Office of Children and Family Successes Eviction Prevention Program. And as Director Edwards has presented to you this afternoon, she spoke in great detail as to the success of that program to date, as well as her future plans in terms of how to move that program forward to continue to address our eviction crisis that we are trying to avoid here in Baltimore. We, DHCD, continue to collaborate with Director Edwards and MOCF, MOCFS, in how best to continue to refer clients to that program and help as she moves forward with continued implementation of the eviction prevention program. It is also worth noting that any applicants that we vetted during the TRS program were automatically referred to MOCFS's eviction prevention program in order to get additional assistance, assistance beyond the months of April, May, and June 2020, which is the months that TRS were able to assist with. I also want to state that DHCD is in the process of implementing the Right to Counsel legislation, which went into effect April 1, 2021, and will be fully implemented within the next four years. DHCD is working and has brought together a work group with legal assistance providers as well as other advocates such as Public Justice Center, Pro Bono Research Center, the Maryland State Bar Association, Maryland Legal Aid Bureau, Disability Rights of Maryland, Healthcare for the Homeless, and United Workers to design the implementation of this program as well as to create the education and outreach plan. I also want to state that DHCD has been developing and will be submitting a, an application for ARPA funds to support the Right to Counsel. And we anticipate the minimum amount of that application. At this time, we've planned a minimum of $4 million to support Right to Counsel, and we'll be looking to see how and if we can increase that amount as part of our ARPA, ARPA funds request. A number of the groups that I've mentioned that we're working with on Right to Counsel are also currently working through finalizing their contract to receive CDBG COVID-related funds to assist with providing legal services. And we anticipate, as we anticipate, the demand for legal services to increase as the courts resume processing. the courts resume processing eviction, eviction cases. And D H C D is committed to continuing to work with the groups noted and the advocacy community and the community at large to help provide legal counsel and prevent eviction as, as possible during that process. D H C D also routinely assists tenants through our homeownership and housing preservation division. Our light intake, our light intake and assessment unit makes referrals for energy and water bill assistance. We also assist renters in completing their state's renters tax credit applications, referring for additional legal counsel, and also assisting, working with landlords through weatherization and lead hazard reduction programs that are available to support landlords and renters in reducing, reducing energy bills as well as preventing lead hazard reduction for tenants. As you've stated in recent months, the Baltimore City Council, as well as Maryland General Assembly have passed additional tenant protections. And I know that some of our advocacy communities will be hearing, will be speaking more to some of those additional items passed at the state level. And currently, we are also actively working with the administration, Baltimore City Council, and our sister agencies to work through and stand up the program as relates to security deposit assistance to tenants. And as Madam Chair mentioned earlier, the importance of that and how it works at concert with all of the different efforts that we are taking to assist tenants, not just during the pandemic of COVID-19, but how we can continue to assist tenants moving forward. One item that I do want to note is that an addition, an additional protection that D H C D is recommending is a creation of a position within our agency to assist tenants facing eviction. Currently, much of our renter assistance is done ad hoc or through, like I said, the light intake and assessment unit or with our tax sales services coordinator and other members of our homeownership and housing preservation division. A dedicated position to focus on tenant outreach, referral to existing programs, and a liaison with our sister agencies and organizations would greatly benefit renters who make up over 50% of Baltimore households. I would like to say that I have been in contact and Director Edwards has reached out as well about assisting potentially with financial support to be able to assist with this creation of the position. And we will be working together to see if we can create this position and have someone within D H C D that can assist as we move forward. We welcome the opportunity to continue to work with our partner agencies to continue to develop a multifaceted approach to supporting residents, as well as working with our nonprofit partners, our legal service providers, our advocacy community, and the citizens at large to provide additional protections for renters in Baltimore. And D H C D stands by our report in support of this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Kennedy, and your detailed testimony as well. And then now we're moving to the housing authority. Any comments or represent Janet, Janet Abrams?
Yes, Madam Chair. Hi.
Go ahead, you're on.
Okay. All right. Good afternoon, Madam Chair, and thank you for inviting us to the hearing today. H A B C, as you all know, is regulated by the U S Department of Housing and Urban Development. And of course, we must operate within their rules and stats and statute and guidelines and recommendation, pummlegated by HUD and the federal government. Our agency supports the intent of this city council resolution and has taken a variety of measures to make sure that we're working with our families to mitigate the issues of, and with the impact of COVID-19 pandemic, has implemented several different measures. So just real quickly, one of the things that we issued was a timely adjustment to rent due to the loss of income. And what does that mean? It means that under our program, we have the ability to adjust residents' rent down to zero, where the housing authority take on the responsibility of covering the entire voucher payment under the voucher program. And on the public housing side, just reduce the rent to zero based on the information that we received. We have processed over 3,500 of those requests where the housing authority is currently taking on the full subsidy. We have also streamlined procedures for reporting income changes. As you all know, in the past, residents had to bring in a number of documentation so that we can adjust their rent. What we're doing as a part of one of the HUD waivers, we have implemented and accept from tenants declarations of self-certifications so that residents do not have to go through the process of going to their employers to get in, information to bring into our offices. We have also, on the Section 8 side, implemented the online recertification process where our residents have the ability to take pictures of their documents and scan it through their phones to our caseworkers so that they do not have, during the pandemic and moving forward, we will be adopting that process of online research to help the families to mitigate the issues of coming into our office. We also established repayment agreements. One of the things that was mentioned earlier, a lot of the programs that exist currently are for the pandemic, meaning that the rents that are being paid to us through the various programs only cover what happened during the pandemic period from March of 2020 to current. Of course, we have families that did not pay their rent prior to the pandemic. So right now, the housing authority have $2.2 million in arrears of rent that has not been paid to the agency since and before the pandemic. So one of the things that we're doing with those families and with the families under the current resolution, we are working with them to establish repayment agreements. And what does that mean? We have taken the threshold that we had prior of the 50% down, and then you pay your current rent and you pay the back rent at the same time. We have brought it down to a very low level. We have worked with the residents to make sure that they can pay those. And that, that, that is part of the process on a monthly basis to make sure that the residents stay current with their current month, but also pay something towards their arrears. So we have established that program. We have also collaborated with many community partners through our resident services department to make sure that we are getting the information out to the families. And we're doing that by establishing a very robust communication program where we are currently using, we are using the rob telephone system, we're emailing, we're also using robo-text. We find that the robo-text work with our families. We're communicating through social media. We're using every platform necessary to work with the families. We have also done door knockers that we have placed on the resident's door, telling them about the various program that we, programs that we have, but also the programs that the city and various other organization provide. We have adopted certain waivers. So through HUD, HUD has relaxed a lot of waivers, a lot of the requirements that the families had to go through previously. They have relaxed a lot of those. So we have adopted a lot of those waivers to make sure that we are working with the families, such as income verification. One of the things that we also had was the over-income families. We have some families that's living in our housing that is over income. And during that process, we had to extend that, that whole process, meaning that those families will not be touched or evicted simply because they're over income. So we adopted a lot of different waivers to make sure that we can work with those families. We have also extended the family unification program. That was a 12-month program. We have extended that to a longer period. We have worked with absent from unit families. We do have some families that went out of the home to sit with families that were ill. There was a piece in place that says you could not be absent from the home for a certain time. We have extended those periods. And of course, we're working with the C O C and the Mayor's Office of Homeless Services. We received 278 emergency housing vouchers for the homeless. So we're working to implement those, to administer those vouchers as soon as possible to, to those qualified families. And of course, the outreach continue, our outreach using social media and everything that we can possibly use to work with our families. And of course, over at one of our properties, we have, one of the group's urban strategies, they have established an international committee to work through the eviction process so that the housing authority will be part of that eviction committee so that we can learn from internationally what are some of the things that are being implemented to prevent evictions. So thank you for this opportunity. We have more, but I, I don't want to bore you with all the different things that we have implemented. However, we do have information in our offices. Anyone want to hear more about what we're doing, we'll be more than happy to respond to any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Abrams. And you, you gave a detailed present, testimony as well for your agency. I just have one quick question, and it might not be just for you, but you know, it's important, I, I notice it's important that all of the agencies that have spoken, you listed or mentioned resources, and I guess I needed, we all need to know, especially the committee and the council members, is there a concise listing of all the resources, programs mainly, that exist to help those impacted? Is there a concise listing? Because you each mentioned, you know, some different programs, different, is, do we have a concise, do we have a concise list somewhere that can be given to the committee?
For me, I'm not sure if, I am sure that Tisha and her team, they have the city's information. We have the housing authority. I have not seen anything where the housing authority information coupled with the city and with the state is available. However, that's something that we can work with Tisha and with Alice to make sure that we put, put that together for the committee.
Yeah, I, I think that this is important. Nina, I, I, and I want you to listen to this as well. I think it's something that we all really need to put together. It's just important, especially now that we are doing new and added things to, to help our most vulnerable and the people that are definitely impacted by this. So if we could work on getting a important list, and we're talking about a local, state, and federal list, I think it's important that it's something that we all have. So can that happen?
Oh, definitely. I mean, I think it's a great idea. We can work together to do that.
Okay. Nina Semulus, can you help to get this list together for, I know it's going to take a little bit of time, but I think it's a very important list for us to have?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Any other questions before we move on with our agenda? Hearing none from the committee. And before we get, we have four people listed kind of as a panelist that's going to speak on this resolution. But I do, at first, I do want to mention that the committee has received written testimony from a listing of organizations that I want to mention, and some of them are represented today at this hearing. So we do have written testimony besides the testimony that I read from Zachary Berger. We do have written testimony from the Baltimore Renters United, which includes the Public Justice Center and Access to Justice, also 1199, S E I U, United Healthcare Workers East, also Jews United for Justice, also Healthcare for the Homeless, and finally, finally Beyond the Boundaries. So, and just want to let everyone know that written testimony can also be accessed on the council's legislative website. So on that note, we have a group of four panelists that Councilwoman Ramos wants us to hear from. And we'll start, I'll just go down the list here, and we'll start with Matt Hill from the Public Justice Center. Matt, are you on?
I am, Madam Chair. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. So again, Matt Hill, I'm attorney here at Public Justice Center. Thank you for the opportunity to testify today. I want to emphasize two things throughout my testimony, scale and scope. The need to scale up the current eviction prevention efforts as quickly as possible and to expand the scope of what is possible. So I provided some extensive data on, on the eviction tsunami that is currently upon us in my written testimony. Just a couple of numbers that I want to highlight, 823 warrants of restitution issued in June and July. In other words, 823 eviction cases that have already been adjudicated and the eviction is imminent. So when folks talk about an eviction moratorium, I, I just, I shake, because we have not had an eviction moratorium. We've had limited eviction defenses that have worked for some people in certain circumstances where they've had usually some sort of access to legal advice or some sort of social work. But we still are facing a massive crisis, 21,000 households, total of $67 million in rental debt, and it's had a huge disparate impact, I think, as one councilman said, already on black and brown communities and likely to continue to have that throughout the state and in Baltimore too. And of course, that's a cruel irony because it's the same black and brown community, communities that were disproportionately asked to be our essential workers during the pandemic that are now most subject to eviction in the economic aftermath. The good news is that the city has been allocated $100 million, primarily in federal funds, to address this crisis. I know Ms. Edwards said $80 million. I'm not sure the source of the discrepancy, but it's a significant sum of funds that should be enough to actually, you know, pet a significant dent in this crisis. The question is, can we expedite the funding to align and act quickly and effectively to prevent the eviction crisis as it's happening? As Director Edwards said, the eviction order is going to expire July 31st. The governor's eviction order is going to expire on August 15th. So even those limited protections we've had are disappearing very quickly. I want to give you just one quick illustration of, of a good outcome, but it'll illustrate just what we're looking at. I represented Tina Hickman. She lost her job recently when the pandemic started. She was working at McDonald's, and she lost her job when the pandemic started. And she's been unable to get new employment because she's had to be the Zoom school supervisor for her nine-year-old and her 14-year-old for the past 15 months. And so I think somebody mentioned this, it's not just are the jobs available, but can people actually adjust their lives? Can we actually get childcare available to folks so that they can go back to work? And that piece hasn't happened yet, and that's critical. Miss Hickman paid as much rent as she could over the next 15 months, but it wasn't enough. And her landlord, Dominion Property Management, when it didn't get full payment, had filed over five eviction actions against her and sent her a 60-day notice to non-renew her tenancy. This is what we call a tenant holding over case. And so, you know, the, the landlord, the, again, Miss Hickman paid a bunch of money. The mayor's office paid over $8,500 to help stop a rent-based eviction and offered to pay the landlord even more. But on July 2nd, the landlord told the mayor's office, no, we're going to move forward with eviction anyway. This is taking too long. We don't think Miss Hickman's ever going to recover. And so they moved forward with an eviction for that tenant holding over that was actually scheduled for today. So the mayor's office reached out to us. We filed an emergency motion to try to stop the eviction, the threat of litigation, the threat of bad press, the carrot from the mayor's office of, of payment going forward. threat of bad press, the carrot from the mayor's office of payment going forward. That was enough to convince the landlord to settle the case and to keep Miss Hickman in her home through August, excuse me, October 31st. This is fantastic. This illustrates the importance of partnership between legal services, social services, financial assistance. But it also illustrates that these efforts have to be scaled up, and they have to be scaled up now. And the scope has to be scaled, excuse me, the scope has to be expanded to cover even more people and the situations that we're facing now. So first, I think, what can the city council do about this, right? And I think six things. A lot of this is a resolution from the city council, but a resolution can go a long way to really demonstrating to the public and to other policymakers how critical it is for the city to be even more proactive. First, advocating for the mayor's office to have all the resources that they need in order to expedite these eviction prevention efforts. I want to compliment Director Edwards, Commissioner Kennedy. You know, the social safety network, social safety net in Baltimore City and throughout the country had been cut to the bone. There was no well-funded eviction prevention effort prior to COVID-19, and that is a shame on all of us. And so it's a monumental task to stand up a $100 million program overnight, and we really appreciate their efforts to do so. However, you know, having spent $18 million of that money is a good start, but again, when you have $100 million and you have 21,000 households facing eviction, it shows the need to really expedite moving the money out the door, coordinating with legal and social services. So again, supporting the mayor's office and really urging the mayor's office to continue to move forward with expediting those payments. I'm really excited to hear about the eviction diversion program at the courthouse that Director Edwards spoke about, encouraging the district court, the mayor, the city council can encourage the district court and the sheriff's office and the mayor's office to really take this seriously. What does eviction diversion even mean in this context? Well, like I said, we've got a number of evictions coming down the pipeline. They're all in different stages. Some of them have these diversion orders, some of them have rental assistance applications. How do we make sure that we prioritize and reach the people who are going to be evicted first and make sure that they get the assistance first to avoid that eviction? That's what the eviction diversion of the courthouse is all about. And so we hope the council will urge the mayor's office, the district court, and the sheriff's office to take that seriously and to implement a robust program. We've outlined exactly what that program could look like. We're happy to have conversations with these entities further. And I want to compliment again the mayor's office for making a number of policy changes in the past and having a number of policy changes in the works. Relocation, Director Edwards mentioned relocation. Tenants whose landlords simply say, no, I don't want the money, or tenants who are living in truly uninhabitable conditions, they need help to relocate. And Director Edwards has told us that this is in the works. It's going to happen with United Way, but frankly, it needs to happen now. We've needed this relocation program for months, and so it is urgent to make this happen as soon as possible. Same with the contracts that landlords are supposed to sign, that they're not going to move forward on any eviction cases for a period of time. That needs to happen immediately. Again, it's needed to happen for months, and the urgency is only greater. Finally, a policy change that we've urged for the mayor's office. Again, we're having a lot of landlords either refuse payments because they want to evict the tenant for one reason or another. If the landlord's going to refuse the payment, federal regulations encourage local jurisdictions like Baltimore City to pay the tenant. If the landlord refuses payment, Baltimore City can pay the tenant. The tenant can use that money either to pay the landlord, or if the landlord's still refusing payment, they can locate and meet their own housing needs. This is all part of a carrot-and-stick approach to make sure that we're actually reaching the most vulnerable folks who we're trying to assist. Fourth, calling again on the mayor to fund the Right to Counsel initiative. As Miss Hickman's case demonstrates, our eviction prevention efforts are most successful when we all work together: legal, social services, financial assistance. I'm glad to hear Commissioner Kennedy say that about $4 million total, I assume that's over four fiscal years, would go toward implementing the Right to Counsel program, or that's the request they're making for ARPA funds. We need to get up to $7.7 million a year, is our estimate after those four years. And so we truly urge, you know, the mayor's office has access to some federal funds that could be put toward this initiative. DHCD has funding available. And so if we're really going to be serious about implementing Right to Counsel, we need to actually think beyond just $4 million over four years and really have a plan that's sustainable both from federal funds and from non-federal funds to get there. The city council and the mayor have made this commitment. It's now time to actually come up with a plan to make it happen. I do want to compliment Commissioner Kennedy for drawing a number of us into a work group in order to work on those implementation details, but we really do need that funding and a serious plan for that funding. Fifth, so those are kind of the resolutions that the city council can make to really elevate this issue and encourage specific action from our partners in the mayor's office and the district court and the sheriff's office. What can the city council do? First, as I think Councilman Glover said, there's this lease renewal bill on the mayor's desk, but that's going to end 180 days after the state of emergency ends. The state emergency ended July 1st. The city council can and should extend that 180-day period. That is not going to be enough to actually get Baltimore City residents back on their feet and have stability in their lives. Because here's the thing, I don't think this has been brought up yet. A lot of times, people say, well, tenants can just move elsewhere, right? They don't like where they're living, the landlord's trying to evict them, the landlord wants to end the relationship, move elsewhere. There's nowhere to go, okay? There is nowhere to go. I've been doing this for a long time, and the reason why these situations are so desperate is because tenants don't have anywhere to go. The rental housing market is incredibly tight. Landlords have tightened up their screening criteria for who they're going to rent to. And so tenants who may be suffering from unemployment, may not have a steady documented income, may have an eviction issue in the past, there is nowhere for them to go. And so these cases are more desperate, and so things like extending this lease renewal requirement, extending the Renter Relief Act that the council passed in 2020 that prohibits rent increases, that's going to end 90 days after July 1st. That could be extended. The council could take that action. I think that's important because of the economic fallout from COVID-19 that's going to last long beyond the 90 days after July 1st. Finally, sixth thing, this is more global. We can never return to the bad old days. I'm extremely encouraged by all the resources that are being brought to bear on eviction prevention right now. That is a sea change from prior to COVID-19, in which 6,500 tenants were evicted each year, excuse me, tenant families were evicted each year, and that was treated as just a cost of doing business. A different way is possible. We can do this, and so we can ameliorate those impacts on education stability, on employment, on physical and mental health. And the city council can make sure that we never return to the bad old days in which eviction was just treated as something that happens. So thank you for your time. Happy to talk further.
Thank you, thanks for your testimony and your recommendations, and we have your written testimony as well. Moving on to Carol Ott, the Fair Housing Action Center.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair and members of the committee. Thank you so much for having us here today to talk about this really important pressing issue. In 2020, the Fair Housing Action Center of Maryland had 227 requests for information or assistance from Baltimore City tenants relating to landlord-tenant issues, and we ended the year with 949 statewide. But of those 227 Baltimore City households, 56 of those requests were from tenants who needed eviction prevention assistance, and all of those except five were received after April 1st of last year. Thirty-six percent of those properties, I need to add, were unlicensed rentals, and more than half of them were households that are headed by black women. I'm pleased, however, to report that only three of those 56 households were evicted. Not that I'm pleased to report anybody is evicted, but this could have been a lot worse. I'm also sad to say that two of the three households that were evicted were evicted illegally. One was a family of four. It was a mom, dad, and two kids. They lived on Herkimer Street in my former neighborhood of Picktown. And when they contacted us, they were crammed in a car. That's where they were living, doing the best they could just to get by. We were able to refer the family to different agencies across the city, and so I'm happy to report that it didn't take too long for them to be rehoused. But something that I think, I've heard other people say that I think we need to reiterate multiple times is that the story of illegal evictions, the story of multiple evictions, too many evictions, and the story of, you know, all of these stories are not new, and nor are they only pandemic-related. There are stories that are repeated all too often across our city, and they're the result of decades of redlining and economic inequality and a failure of government to put an end to certain illegal real estate practices that have been occurring since before I was born, 1968. And ironically, that's the same year that the Fair Housing Act became law. So this year, we have received a total of 708 intake requests, 132 from Baltimore City renter households. Twenty-five of those are related to eviction. One is related to an illegal eviction, and just under half of those 25 households are living in unlicensed rental properties. And I have found no evidence that any of the remaining 24, besides the one illegal eviction, none of those people have been evicted. And it's my firm belief that we would have had far more of our clients, our client households evicted without the city's eviction prevention fund. While it wasn't perfect in its execution at the beginning and the conception of the fund, this money has been invaluable to preventing dozens of our clients from losing their homes. And it's, when you compare this fund to the former fund that was only available through the courts, and it required tenants to go through, you know, jump through hoops just to apply, you had to have an eviction notice from the court, and the fund ran out of money by June, basically, of every year. So until barriers to safe and affordable licensed rental housing have been lifted for everyone across our city, it's my recommendation that we continue this fund, the city's fund, until at least the end of December 2022, if we can. And I would also ask that the city extend its ban on rent increases and failure to pay evictions until the end of 2022, because frankly, it's just, it's far less expensive for taxpayers and more fiscally responsible to prevent homelessness in the first place than to have all of us scrambling around, trying to figure out what we're going to do when people fall off the fiscal cliff. And having a fund that would be accessible to residents who were impacted by COVID, because, you know, at this point, there aren't many people who have not been impacted by COVID. So, you know, people didn't receive their unemployment payments in a timely fashion, which of course is a failure of the state and not the city. But so many of our clients, they work, and they want to work, and they want to pay their bills, they want to pay their rent. They're, you know, they're not looking for a handout or to get over on the system. Had they been given their unemployment payments in a timely manner, I would venture a guess that half of these folks would have never come to us in the first place because they would have still been able to pay. And so, you know, for us as an organization, we acted quickly. We hired somebody part-time who has been an amazing asset to our organization. So we've been able to think about expanding our phone hotline, our phone intake line, so that we can reach more people. Really, it's about reaching people and, you know, taking advantage of all the wonderful partnerships that we have with other organizations like PJC. And I also just want to quickly take an opportunity to thank all of the wonderful people that we work with at the Mayor's Office of Homeless Services, HABC, Baltimore City, DHCD. Without all of these folks coming together and working together, none of, we wouldn't have been as successful as we've been this year or last year. And so I would love to see those partnerships continue in a more sustainable way that's not focused on just COVID. So thank you so much for your time, and if you want to discuss anything further, please don't hesitate to reach out.
Thank you, Carol, for your testimony and also your recommendations. And I totally agree with your last statements of how important partnerships are and all of us working together to move this agenda forward in all aspects. So thank you again. Moving forward to Kathy Howard of MMHA.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair. Can you hear me?
Yes, yes, we can.
That's wonderful. Well, thank you very much for having me today, Madam Chair, and thank you, Councilwoman Ramos, for adding MMHA to your panel. I think that there is, my overarching point to make to the council here is that landlords, particularly housing providers that are multifamily housing providers, are not the enemy here. We are your partners. We have been working tirelessly with all of the various groups that have been discussing this matter today. We've worked with BICAP, we've worked with the mayor's office, we've worked with the United Way to assist our tenants who are in financial difficulty thanks to the pandemic or any other problem that has been related to the pandemic. And we have done that very successfully. The one thing that I think that we are very, very much aware of is that we, and that we think that everyone else should keep in mind and should be in the front of your minds is that we're not in the business of evicting people, and we are absolutely committed to trying to work with our tenants. I work for Regional Management Inc., who's a member of the Maryland Multi-Housing Association, and I wanted to give you a little bit of a snapshot of where regional management has been in helping its tenants with regard to the programs that each of us have been hearing about today. Just in this last round of funding that began in May, we had a potential pool of delinquent tenants of 816 folks. Not all of them were eligible for the amount of funding that the parameters of the program in May called for. About 465 of them met those criteria. We sent out 465 letters to each one of those tenants, asking them to please get in touch with the program and make the application. Of those, of those 465 people, 245 have already applied to the program, and we know of at least 15 of those folks who have been accepted into the program, and we are now working with the programs to get the information that they need from us so that they can continue to hopefully bring all of those applicants to fruition and get them back on the straight and narrow on rent payments and help to support those families. I think that's a huge success story. The thing that worries me about what, you know, what those numbers show is that there's an awful lot of our tenant base who we've contacted but who do not an awful lot of our tenant base who we've contacted but who do not get back in touch with either the program or with us. They're not, we are willing to make, you know, we've been willing to make payment programs, we've been willing to do a lot of, shall we say, creative thinking with regard to the problem with back rent payments. But we can't help anyone unless they communicate with us and partner with us. And that's, I think, one of the things that folks like my fellow panelists seem to forget is that that is, that we can't, we cannot be the only person trying to get these funds made available to our tenants. The tenants also have to be a partner in that. I think that the other situation that I think is very important here, not to forget, is that these partnerships that we're talking about should include the housing providers. We are, we are very much interested in making sure that these programs are a success and that our tenants have that, have success as a result of those programs. We've already been in touch with the Legal Aid Bureau. We had a Zoom call with them last week to start talking about the eviction, the eviction court proceedings and what can be done to possibly make those court proceedings a place where we may reach out to more tenants who would be potentially eligible for these, to participate in these programs. But I think that one thing that you have to keep in mind is, is that by the time a landlord files on a tenant in rent court, there is, there is a problem where there's a frustration on both sides, the tenant and the landlord. The landlord depends on the rent to be able to keep their properties up, to do the things that they're supposed to do, to pay their mortgages, to pay their maintenance people. And without that, their, their business is going to fail just as much as any other business that cannot get the income upon which its business is based. We are looking forward to working with the Legal Aid Bureau and coming up with some potential ideas to deal with that, that issue in rent, these issues in rent court. But you can't forget that there, you know, we can't just say, okay, we'll take a promise to pay and that's, and make that stick. We need to have some assurance that this, that these programs are going, and these, these folks who are applying through those programs are actually going to be accepted in those programs and that, that it's all going to work out in the best interest of all the parties involved, including the landlord. One thing I have to say is I think that I have to congratulate all of the hardworking folks in these programs. We have worked with a lot of extremely wonderful people, some of whom have testified here today, and they have been, they have been very helpful to us. I think that there have been some rocky starts in some of these programs with trying to get the money out to the street once you have applications in hand. We're looking forward to working with the United Way in Baltimore City because it has been a very good partnership for us in Baltimore County. And I think that this is going to be, hopefully, a big success for everyone in that situation. But again, I really think that one of the things that, that one of the things that I think that is not a great idea, unfortunately, Mr. Hill talked about the extension of not being able to renew a lease or end a lease and terminate a lease. Tying the hands of the landlords that way really does negatively affect the entire development that they are managing. That is a very big problem. I think we testified about that when the bill was being heard. And we can see, we could continue to have that concern about the idea of extending that even further. So I think that all in all, we are very happy to be working with all of these various partnerships. We look forward to doing some innovating to try to get these programs to be even more effective for both our tenants and for the city as a whole. But I think that, I think that you, if you count the landlord out as a partner, you're making a large mistake, and we're here to be that partner, and we hope that you will reach out to us and we will reach out to you. Thank you for letting me talk, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Kathy Howard, for your testimony and your recommendations as well. And I do think, I know some of the agencies did verbally mention the importance of helping and working with the landlord as well. So thank you again. And now, the last person on this panel, and forgive me if I pronounce your name wrong, Julia Sarmiento.
Sarmiento, thank you so much.
Okay. Latino Economic Development Corporation, correct?
Latino Economic Development Center. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you so much for inviting me. We're really happy. Again, my name is Julia Sarmiento, and I am the Tenant Service Innovation Prevention Program Manager at the Latino Economic Development Center. I'm here today to talk about the struggles we have seen at LEDC when we are helping tenants apply for the rental assistance program. LEDC has been able to help so far since January, over 100 families applied for both the rental assistance and the utility assistance programs here in the city of Baltimore. Just to let you know a little better about LEDC, we are a nonprofit 501(c)(3) founded in 1991. Our mission is to improve the wealth-building capacity of low and moderate-income Latinos in other underserved communities in both District of Columbia, Maryland, and Virginia. We do this by pursuing three objectives, which is increasing the number and strength of small businesses, increasing homeownership, and, very important, preserving affordable housing and preventing tenant displacement. LEDC Tenant Service and Eviction Prevention Program started in January of 2021 with a goal of helping Baltimore City tenants who have been impacted by the pandemic as a result of the COVID-19, which we know that led to many of the people falling behind on the rent and many of them becoming displaced or better from their homes. Many communities have been impacted, and as we know, the Hispanic community is, has been, is one of the communities that has been greatly impacted. A good number of Latino families in the Baltimore City area are undocumented. When the pandemic hit, many lost their jobs, unable to apply for unemployment because of their immigrant status. And when they were trying to look for jobs, nobody was hiring them. So it was like nobody, they didn't have any income. They were able to go back to work, the number of hours were cut. I have heard many stories from our clients saying, it's like, I was able to go back to work, but my hours were drastically reduced. Some lost family members due to COVID, and some had to cover for funeral expenses, both in the United States and out back in their home countries. Parents, many of them tested positive because of the little jobs that they have, and they had to stop working and quarantine. They had their children at home as well. Many of the children also became parents. Teenagers were taking care of the little ones. So it affected the family drastically. And for many stories where the whole family that tested positive for COVID. LEDC has been working with helping families submit applications, but we have encountered many problems in this process. One of them, as we have, somebody has already mentioned in here, has been technology. Many of the Hispanic families do not know how to use a computer. They know how to use a phone, but it becomes very difficult when not have a using email. And most important, the time is taken for applications to be reviewed. LEDC has admitted a lot of applications, but many of them are still, have not been reviewed by anybody in the office. Landlords have become aggressive because tenants cannot pay the rent. LEDC has been talking to landlords and explaining how the program works, hoping that they will be patient and wait before they begin to evict the tenants. Others don't seem to care if the city pays a portion of the rent and still proceed in the eviction. Subtenants, this is another problem that we are seeing. Many of our clients are subtenant, where the original tenant does not want to cooperate because they say that they don't want to inform the landlords that they have a subtenant to help them pay for the rent. This becomes a trouble for the subtenant since they don't have a way to prove. Lack of education is another thing that we have seen a lot in our Hispanic community. First of all, they don't know their legal rights. We have been talking to many, many families in the community and letting them know about their legal rights. We have been referring them to Maryland Legal Aid, and we really want to thank them because they have been very, very helpful in making sure that they are, they know their rights. LEDC believes that in order to better help Baltimore City residents, we can do a couple of things. Work on making the review process faster, expedite the process as long as it takes. We have a couple of applications that we have submitted back in February, and we were able to check, and none of them have been even been seen by anybody in the office. So this becomes a struggle. We get calls from the landlord saying, it's like, I haven't heard anything. So we're really worried about what is going to happen with these tenants. This program brings, another problem that we are seeing is the language barrier. A good number of the Baltimore City residents LEDC has been working with do not speak any English, and understanding the language is very difficult. This has been a big problem, technology problems, as we mentioned before. Just to give you an example of one of our stories, it's like one of our clients applied for the program at the beginning of the year, and it was not until he notified us that the landlord filed a case against him in court and that there was an eviction, that the city was able to move, jump in and pay for their rent. And that, that we were able to stop the evictions, but still, it seems like it's a big struggle. I have many other clients that they have not received anything. They have been trying to call and get on the status. I know that it was mentioned at the beginning that more work will be done in order so the landlords and tenants can check on the status a much easier way. I hope that this will be solved, more, more work will be put in to solve the situation. We are seeing a lot of struggles in the community. Like I said, language barrier, technology, fear for immigration status because they feel like, if I apply for this program, it's going to affect my immigration status. We're trying to educate the tenants as much as possible, educate the community. So thank you so much for your time, and I hope that any questions, I am here available. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Julia, for your, the important information that you shared in your testimony as well. Moving on, we're going to now, the committee will now take public testimony, and I'm going to start, I know there's five callers on, so I want to get the five callers first for just a change, because we usually do attendees, and I want to start with the five callers. And we're going to start with Adam Skolnick.
Skolnick.
Skolnick, sir. I apologize.
No, no worries at all. I really don't have a lot to add to Kathy Howard's testimony. My name is Adam Skolnick. I'm the executive director of the Maryland Multi-Housing Association. And as Kathy so eloquently put out, you know, we've been a partner with Tisha, with the United Way, with everybody. No, none of our members, you know, want anybody to get evicted, but you know, there is always nuance to the stories. So I, you know, based on Mr. Hill's testimony as an example, I think we'll get some detail for y'all to be able to review, you know, what really happened with Ms. Hickman. I think there's a lot more nuance to that story than Mr. Hill lets on, and I think that that's part of, the conversation needs to be that there's a lot of nuance here and bludgeoning rental property owners with the ability to never evict somebody or to never get a rent increase is not, is not the proper way of doing this, that as we've all talked about, we need to partner in this. And, and you know, and if residents or community tenants are communicative and working with our landlords, we want to be right there, working with them and make sure those people don't get evicted. But as Ms. Howard said, if someone's not communicating, if someone's ignoring the requests, if someone's ignoring how, you know, how they've gotten so far behind, what else is a rental property owner supposed to do? They have no choice. They have a business to run, they have employees to pay, they have, they have, you know, they have to upkeep the property. And, and you know, just to make one very clear point, I've never heard this council offer a rental property owner a pause or a break on their real property taxes. You know, you're still expecting us to pay those property taxes on time, and all of our members, or most of our members do. So we just need, we need the council to understand that we are good actors in the city, and we are, we are here to help any way we can, and we just want to be partners in making sure that this, this ends the right way. The people who sadly don't want to communicate sadly probably need to be evicted, and those that communicate, we want to work with them and make sure they stay in their housing.
Thank you for sharing your opinion and your testimony. So we're, this is not a debate. We're just, you're soliciting your testimony, so thank you so much. And now we'll move to the next caller, and that's Chanello Askew. Excuse me if I'm pronouncing it wrong. Chanello, are you there?
Yes, that's all right. I don't have any comments. Thank you.
Okay. And then there's caller number seven. Caller number seven, are you there?
Yes, that's me, I think.
You can say your, say your name and your comment.
Yes, my name is Tisha Guthrie. I'm a member of the Affordable Housing Trust Fund Commission, also a member of Baltimore Rented United. As the Associated Press indicated, June of this year, the nation's housing availability and the affordability crisis is expected to worsen significantly following the pandemic. It is likely to widen the housing gap between Black, Latino, and white homeowners, as well as putting homeownership out of reach of a lot of lower-class Americans. So those who comprise the lifeblood of Baltimore City are anticipated to bear the brunt of this foreseen crisis. The very people who have already been least likely to have stable, safe, and affordable housing, much less than share the status of homeownership and the capacity to build generational wealth. The $45 billion allocated for rental assistance is slow to reach renters and tenants and to accomplish the set goal. Amongst the most likely to face evictions and potential homelessness are those with disabilities, those with children, and our working Black and Brown single mothers. Ultimately, there isn't enough housing nationwide being built to address the population growth, which also, of course, indicates a lack of housing availability. The escalation of home prices can be, can be attributed to, or attributed to the supply and demand instability or in proportion of supply and demand of homes. This places homeownership out of reach of not just lower-income families, but as we know nationwide, families altogether. And, you know, I just want to, I just want to reiterate that Baltimore is at a historic population low, and so we really need to focus on not just, not just this crisis that we're, that we're dealing with right now, but we need to invest in, in the long-term availability of housing, affordable housing. Ensuring that all residents have access to the most basics of all human needs must be the first of any priorities. Anything less is illogical and paramount to the civic suicide of Baltimore City and our survival. We have survived many traumas, but we cannot be delusional enough to think that we will survive anything. And unapologetic investments must be made in protecting Baltimore from losing its organic Baltimore residents. If only this historic period is to be issued as an excuse to push out and to further disenfranchise those who have survived the legendary disinvestments in the very communities we are today most likely to be at risk for eviction. in the very communities we are today most likely to, to be at risk for eviction. Um, so again, I, I really hope that, um, we can really put forth a concerted effort um, to, to not only address this current crisis, but to take a holistic measure to ensure that those people who have been a, a, an organic part of Baltimore will always have a place here. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Next, Michael Lent. Um, I think Michael Lent has dropped off. Okay, now we're moving to the, uh, raised hands and we'll start with, at the top with April Ferguson. Please keep your testimony two, three minutes.
Yes, good afternoon. Uh, my name is April Ferguson and I'm a clinical social worker, um, with healthcare for the homeless and support of housing. Um, so part of my role to support clients, um, that obtain housing through clinical, um, therapy and also case management. Um, I just wanted to highlight three things, um, that I thought about when I realized I'd be attending this hearing. Um, one is a client that I work with that obtained housing through our program and this client's improvement in mental health and also the burden that was taken off this client's shoulders by having stable housing. Um, and this client is actively involved in our program because this client has had eviction history and had, has experienced homelessness and has made it very clear that they never want to experience anything like that again. Um, the second thing I thought about is that, um, an eviction would not just be the loss of a home, a physical home, but also the loss of a stable address. Um, in my work with clients, it's been very difficult to assist clients with things like jobs, applying for benefits when they don't have a stable address. Even securing vital documents for clients becomes more difficult when there's no address to mail back the social security card or to mail back the birth certificates, um, which are items that, forms of identification some clients need in order to apply for certain housing programs and, um, for housing in general. Um, the last thing I just thought about through my work is what happens when clients are evicted and where they go. Um, I have clients in unstable situations when they have nowhere to go. Um, temporary housing friends and family and just can't create a certain stability when they are evicted and have nowhere to go. Um, hoping they get spots and shelters that are getting overcrowded and hoping there's a bed available. Um, and it just leaves them in such an, with such instability and it's a lot of work to try to support these clients and they're already in vulnerable situations and vulnerability does not get better, um, through an eviction. Um, those are just the points I wanted to point out. I appreciate, um, uh, being able to give feedback on this issue. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Moving down to Douglas Nevens.
Yes, thank you. Um, I'm Douglas Nevens, staff attorney here at Maryland Legal Aid and the Baltimore City Office. My colleagues and I represent low-income tenants in court to avoid unjustified evictions as well as unsubstantiated charges by their landlords. We also represent tenants that subsidize housing, including tenants in the Housing Choice Voucher Program or Section 8, as well as public housing, ensuring that they can maintain their status within those programs. Maryland Legal Aid is concerned about the steady rise in residential evictions. As my colleague Matt Hill reiterated earlier about how we haven't necessarily had a true eviction moratorium and the fact that there's been eviction going on throughout the pandemic, just for different reasons. And so despite the fact that we do have these eviction moratoriums in the governor order or from the CDC, we're still seeing tenants being evicted or tenant holding over or breach of leases or wrongful tenancy, even though we know rent is really the primary cause. But because landlords want people out and they want to get somebody paying in, that it seems to be quicker and easier to go through these alternate routes for evictions. Because as of right now, rent court, which is known for fair to pay rent, those cases not being heard as fast as it used to be. One thing we would encourage is for greater coordination among our state and local agencies with the district court and the sheriff's office. I'll say I'm quite heartened to hear from Director Edwards about the appearance of staff at the district court because I'll tell you, as of right now, I mean, as of yesterday I had cases where we had to negotiate between the landlord and the court to get a postponement so that people who are, so our client who was waiting for a rental assistance to come through. Because our primary goal is not just to avoid an eviction, but to avoid a judgment. And so any way which we can get money in the hands of landlords to prevent a judgment would be helpful. We're also seeing the fact that because of people being either accused or may have had a judgment against them, it's making them a lot harder for them to find new housing. And so anything that helps us be able to get eviction prevention assistance early in the process will be helpful in the long run, in the long run for tenants. One other thing, when the note is about, again, when it comes to these alternatives to fair to pay rent, is that if a tenant is in rent court, for example, they will get a two-week notice period to know when an eviction may be forthcoming. Uh, there are all these other different type of notices about one's rights, what have you. But those are not as available in other alternatives. And so tenants who are facing tenant holding over or breaches of leases, even though rent may be the reason why they're being evicted, uh, they don't have those same type of safeguards or the same access to information. And so that is why we would encourage more investment in terms of getting the message out about what the resources are, letting tenants know more about what their defenses are and rights are. And so the Right to Counsel initiative will go a long way to do that. And also just in terms of keeping in mind that when we're looking at eviction, it's not just about paying a rent, but it's, it's go beyond that into the how we provide housing security for the tenants in Baltimore State. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony, Molly Amster.
Hi, thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, Molly Amster with Jews United for Justice. We are an organization that organizes more than 1,600 people across the city to support local social, racial and economic justice campaigns. I'm also a resident of Edner Gardens in the 14th District. And, um, you know, we are motivated to work on the issues we take on by our tradition. And the Jewish tradition speaks in significant ways about the need to provide tenants sufficient notice before terminating a lease so that they can look for another place to live and they'll, they, so they won't be abandoned on, on the street. Um, and it forbids landlords from evicting tenants during times of hardship, uh, like the winter months when housing is hard to find. And I think with everything that's going on between the pandemic and the housing affordability shortages that we've heard about today, it's safe to say that this would count as a time of general hardship. Um, so right now we're still grappling with the pandemic and Baltimore's facing a flood of evictions. And the impact that evictions have in undermining family and neighborhood stability um, is significant and it also threatens health and education of children. And, um, the same communities, black communities and other communities of color are hit hardest. Um, they're also hit hardest by COVID. And, um, you know, the data clearly shows that evictions increase the COVID death toll. So, you know, in addition to those really significant needs, um, it also makes financial sense for the city to prevent evictions because evictions cost the city substantial amounts of money as dispossessed tenants are forced to draw more heavily on public services. So I want to just echo what my colleague Matt Hill said, um, from the Public Justice Center, that we need to really, um, see things move more quickly and more broadly. Um, that the Right to Counsel legislation, which we're so grateful for the council, um, having passed, really has to be funded fully in order to be effective. Um, and it's another program that helps to diminish the cost to the city. So if the investment of $21 million in federal funds will actually, um, you know, more than make up for, um, the, the savings to the city. And, um, finally, you know, the, um, one of the things I heard, um, in previous testimony is that, you know, we're saying no one, uh, that, that landlords can never increase rent. And that's not what we're saying. What we're saying is we're in an ongoing health emergency despite the governor having lifted it. And, um, we need to act like it and make sure that people can remain housed, um, to protect themselves and the public health. Um, I want to really just close by thanking the council, um, for all of its ongoing efforts to protect renters. And, uh, I hope to see more opportunities for collaboration, um, to really prevent the worsening of this crisis. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your testimony. Karen Wabeky?
Hi, good afternoon. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. Thank you so much for this opportunity to share testimony. My name's Karen Wabek. I'm an attorney with the Homeless Persons Representation Project, also a resident of Baltimore City and of District 7. HPRP is a nonprofit legal, civil legal aid organization that among other things provides free legal representation to low-income tenants in Baltimore City who are facing eviction or termination of their subsidy. As part of that work, attorneys from HPRP attend rent court at least three days each week to provide same-day and extended representation to tenants facing eviction. HPRP is one of three organizations that staffs dockets at rent court in Baltimore City weekly, together with the Public Justice Center and the Pro Bono Resource Center. As you've heard, the need for rental assistance is extreme and the tenant protections that have been in place over the last year, which have kept tenants housed during the COVID-19 pandemic, will end in a matter of weeks. I want to flag what will be happening when the CDC order ends on July 31st. Beginning on August 1st, the District Court of Maryland, sitting in and for Baltimore City, will be entering thousands of judgments for failure to pay rent that have been reserved pursuant to the CDC order. This will happen automatically and en masse, clearing the way for landlords to move forward with evictions in these cases. We encourage MOCFS and the CAP Centers to prioritize the applications that are pending for tenants who have a CDC, a reserve judgment pursuant to the CDC order. I am glad to hear that MOCFS will be working on proactive communications going forward so that tenants and landlords can monitor applica, processing of their application. I wanted to flag, I believe the representative from the LEDC mentioned, um, the long processing times in our experience, um, our, our clients, uh, their applications are being processed four to five months after submission. Uh, the one single thing that would help HPRP in our work with tenants to prevent eviction and homelessness would be to have access to the neighborly system or portal. This is the system that MOCFS is using to, uh, track and process, uh, the applications for rental assistance. And we've been told for months now that we would be receiving a license and access to that neighborly system. Um, we're aware that one of, uh, our partner organizations, PBRC, uh, gained access to neighborly a few weeks ago, but we are still waiting for access. This would help tremendously, um, in being able to go in without having to email or call MOCFS, um, to see what the status of our clients' applications are. This is information that the judges in rent court are asking us for and that we are not in a position to give them at this time. It's also really glad to hear, as others have mentioned, about the plan starting in August for a representative from MOCFS and the CAP Centers to be present in rent court to provide real-time information. This is a, a model that has worked really well in rent court with other agencies, including the Housing Authority of Baltimore City. Um, just this morning, for example, uh, the judge sitting in rent court denied a tenant's request for a postponement because the tenant didn't have, uh, documentation to show the court of what the status of their application was. So I think that will be tremendously helpful to the court, the landlords, to the tenants, everyone involved. So we look forward, uh, to continue to work in partnership, uh, with MOCFS and the CAP Centers. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your testimony and I think that was the last person. And, uh, just a reminder, please submit testimony. You can still submit a testimony in writing to the committee. And, and I understand that there is an amendment. Councilwoman Ramos, would you like to speak about the amendment?
Sure. Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, first I'd just like to say thank you to Madam Chair, the agencies and my colleagues, um, on this committee for, um, having almost a, a three-hour hearing on this. It's such an important issue. I learned a ton and I hope you did as well about what needs to be done moving forward. So I, I really appreciate everybody's time. Um, yes, we, uh, originally drafted the, let, the resolution to also include, uh, some, um, advocacy organizations and the new protocol from the council president's office is to, is to not do that. So, uh, the amendments, um, take out, um, the, uh, take out the, um, advocacy organizations from the resolution. We heard from them today and I'm grateful for all of their work, um, as well as a continued advocacy on this issue. So what this just does is to clean up the resolution so that, um, we're, we're not, um, mentioning one or, uh, advocacy organization over another when we heard from so many today. Uh, so that's all that this amendment does.
Thank you. Do I have any questions from the committee on, uh, anything thus far from, about the amendment or the, uh, the bill? Any questions from committee? Hearing none. Is there a motion to move this amendment?
So moved.
So moved by Ramos, second?
Second.
Oh, second, um, Glover, Councilman Glover. Chair Middleton, yes. Councilman Bullock?
Yes.
Yes. Councilman Conway?
Yes.
Yes. Councilman Dorsey?
Yes.
Yes. Councilman Glover?
Yes.
Is a yes. Councilwoman Ramos?
Yes.
Is a yes. And Councilman Stokes? Is absent. Okay, motion to move the bill.
Madam Chair, before we do that, I, I'm happy to make the motion, but I wonder if I can just, um, add a couple of things if you don't mind?
Sure, go ahead.
Thank you. Um, I, again, I just want to thank everyone for being here today. Um, I think that this was great feedback from those who have gone through the system and worked with clients. So, um, I, I look forward to, um, working with Ms. Edwards and, or Director Edwards and all of our partners, um, to, to make a, it looks like what, what's the beginning of a really robust and amazing system that we just need to take to scale and make sure that it works. Um, but also, uh, work on many other, um, recommendations that all of our colleagues who are here, um, have made. So I really appreciate everybody's time. Um, wanted to go ahead and move this resolution out. Um, if we need to come back for another hearing, we can, but, uh, so I, so I move the resolution.
Okay, is there a motion to move the bill number 21-0036R? Informational hearing, avoiding an eviction crisis. Is there a motion to move the bill?
Madam Chair, I, I second Councilwoman Ramos's motion.
Okay. Moved by Ramos, seconded by Dorsey. Um, voting on a favorable bill with amendment, Chair Middleton, yes. Councilman Bullock?
Yes.
Yes. Councilmember Conway?
Yes.
Yes. Councilman Dorsey?
Madam Chair, first I just want to thank everybody who, um, is working, uh, in the efforts that this, uh, hearing, uh, regards today. Uh, everybody working within all of our city agencies, not only to do what they're already doing, but to continue to seek ways to improve upon what, uh, is already being done. And the same to be said for, uh, all those outside of government who we rely upon as, uh, integral partners in addressing housing opportunity and housing insecurity. I really just appreciate all of their, um, research and preparation and continuous effort. Um, not just in, uh, preparing to come and testify before us today, but... not just in preparing to come and testify before us today, but in the work that they do every day. Thank you, Councilmember Ramos, for calling for this hearing today. Yes, Madam Chair.
That's a yes for Councilman Dorsey. Councilmember Glover?
Oh, yes. I want to also add, you know, something to it as well. That, you know, our constituents, you know, they look for us as city council leaders that represent their districts to, you know, to go out there and fight the tough fights. And so we must do this with, you know, due diligence and to make sure that we figure out these problems directly that's contributing, you know, to these crises. So again, thank you, Councilwoman Odet Ramos. Thank you to every, you know, the panelists. I learned a whole lot today. And I look forward to, again, move this bill. But again, thank you. My answer is yes, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Councilman Glover, is a ye- yes? And Councilwoman Ramos?
Yes.
Is a yes. Councilmember Stokes? Is Councilman Stokes on? Okay, Councilman Stokes absent. And this bill will move to second reader. And I just again want to thank everyone. As the committee stated, this is a very important subject. We're making a whole lot of changes in this city, evolving around equity, equality, and just really helping in getting a handle of our most vulnerable people in the city. And this was a very good informational hearing. Thank you, Councilwoman Ramos. My sentiments, as with all the other colleagues that have spoken. And I just want to thank everyone, especially our, you know, the leaders of these agencies that have stood within this hearing, which is going almost into three hours. Just shows your dedication in trying to help and get these things resolved. So we appreciate you definitely taking the time to stick with us through the whole entire hearing. And just thank everyone for attending and have a nice day. This meeting is adjourned.